All right. Yes? All right, I know Xavier will be joining us in just a moment. But I think we can go ahead. I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn exec and re-enter public. A motion from Christine and a second from Bill. All in favor? We're going to make Xavier raise his hand when he comes in here. All right, in that case, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As some of you may know, the district suffered a heartbreaking loss. One of our staff members, the dean of the high school, Mr. Gilmore, suffered a heartbreaking loss a few days ago. And so I'd just like to ask everybody in this auditorium to just honor a moment of silence and send he and his family your very best. All right, folks. Emergency evacuation procedures, just so everybody knows, in case of emergency, we have two exits here, two exits there, and everybody should just leave calmly and quietly and get out safe. And as I say each week, and Tom has said before me, our buildings are smoke-free, there's no smoking on the building grounds or in the buildings. All right. We are up to our Board of Education meeting minutes of August 6th. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the minutes of August 6th, 2018. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom and a second. Barry, all in favor? Great. We also have warrants certified 8/15/18. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on August 15th, 2018. Can I get a motion? Linda and a second. Xavier, all in favor? That is everyone, thank you. Okay, folks, that moves us to Board Member Communications and Announcements. Does anybody have anything they want to share?
I have one.
Christine?
I was lucky enough to get to spend a beautiful day outside to watch the marching band parent home show. It was, it's every year, it's amazing how much they get done in, I think it's six days, five days?
It's extraordinary.
I don't even know. But congratulations to all of them. It was very impressive, and I can't wait to see the season.
Thank you. Yeah, we're looking forward to a great season for the marching band. Anybody else? I know it's been pretty quiet here these last couple of weeks, but I'm sure that Mr. Polanski, no, I mean event-wise, I was going to say, I'm sure you have plenty to fill us in on. To you.
Oh.
Yeah, you.
Literally to me.
Literally to you.
Thank you for being here today, all of you. Basically, the summer has been filled with a great deal of capital work throughout the district. The board facilities tour is on Friday. I think that everyone who has been here in the past will be very pleased with the level of work that's been done, and I'd like to publicly thank George Austin and his crew, as well as our architects, for stepping in when we had some challenges this summer, to say the least. Terrific work done, and again, this is really to the benefit of students and staff across the district. At this point, as most of you know, our communications to families from each building have gone home. Everybody's got a calendar in hand, everybody's got a transportation guide and information on bus routing in hand. It is clear evidence that the 2018-19 school year is upon us. We had two days, fun-filled days of administrative workshops today and last Wednesday, a lot in a short period of time, and our administrators, just our principals came back on Monday the 20th, and actually, our department chairs were there as well, and came back formally this week. So it's been a lot to swallow in a short amount of time, and you have the schedule to look at, but a great deal was covered in two days. And this week is filled with new teacher orientation, which begins tomorrow. Ms. McCoy is running that tomorrow and Wednesday. We have the high school orientation, we have the middle school orientation this week as well. And then Labor Day is upon us, and the new school year begins next week. I wish everybody a fantastic year. I will throw out one more thing that, as, I'm not going to say it's a surprise, but the grade three through eight assessment results have been delayed. Don't want to get into the commentary there, I don't know exactly why or how, but it's something related to the fact that the administration period shifted from three days to two days and something went awry.
I can barely hear you that well. No, can you speak into the microphone?
In your microphone.
I can't hear you.
Am I not speaking into the microphone?
Yeah.
Better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to repeat that, but I think you heard it.
I've heard it enough, but.
So I'll go back to my prior comment. I wish everybody a terrific opening and a fantastic 2018-19 school year.
Excellent. Right back at you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our first public commentary section. If you are a resident or a staff member or student of the school district, you may approach the mic and speak. You get three minutes. It should be about something on our items for discussion or action, but if nobody has any comments about that, you can comment about other things. We don't talk about personnel, staff, or specific students at the microphone, and it is not a question-and-answer period. So although you may have a question, we won't be answering you from the table, but if you leave your, well, you'll have left your contact information, and if you need a follow-up, somebody will follow up. All right, the microphone is yours, Mr. Graber.
My name is James Graber, a resident in the district, the president of the Teachers Association, and now officially a parent in the district.
Congratulations.
And I just, thank you. We're very excited. So I just wanted to speak today, just kind of follow up in my request last time, as far as the board goals for this year. And I know there was a lot of back and forth, and I appreciated the debate that, not the debate, the discussion that took place about the, sort of the morale of the profession and as it exists in Huntington. And, you know, there was a clause that I saw related to students that I thought was appropriate as well, about the social and emotional well-being of students. And that's really what we're talking about, I think, with staff as well. So if, I'm just hopeful that something explicit can be added to those goals, such that the teachers and faculty and staff in Huntington feel what, feel that the board has that as one of their goals and as an appropriate goal for us. Thank you.
All right, thanks, James.
Thank you, James.
Anybody else? All right, then, we're going to get moving on to items for discussion and action, and our first one would be our Board of Education goals. We had a lengthy discussion the last time, and I guess after our discussion today, we can decide whether we are ready to adopt or not. Correct?
Absolutely. There's no motion needed here because this is listed as an item for discussion. You receive these a couple of weeks back to take a look at, and my hope is that the nine goals encompass many facets of the conversation that we held on August 6th. So at this point, as opposed to reading through them again, you've had a chance to look at them, just to open it up for comment. This is obviously not a final document, any changes can be made, but do understand that our goal-setting, our SMART goal-setting and action-planning processes in district, administratively, usually, well, always follow establishment of board goals. So some are similar to what was in the past, what was present on the goals list in the past, and others have been reworked on a more comprehensive level.
I'll start out. Jim, I like what you've done with them, consolidated, moved some of the around. And as I've looked at it, I've thought about some of the things that may or may not matter to the entire board, but I think I'm going to bring it up anyway. You know, we kind of addressed some of the STEM issues or some of the STEM program when we first initiated it. I thought that was great. I was wondering if maybe we can do like a revolving review of different programs that the schools or the district has in place. For example, let's say we made a goal out of reviewing or revisiting our dual-language program. Let's see how effective it is, what we're doing with it, how we can make it a better program. Maybe the following year, we can do a special ed review, just kind of like revolve through different programs that our school has. That's one suggestion. And then the other suggestion is we've never really visited the extracurricular activities, and I think Christine kind of touched on that last time, particularly in regards to like sports. I've never seen, or maybe I, it just wasn't, I haven't looked at it, but maybe something with regards to the accountability of the sporting equipment. The equipment that the teams have, you know, helmets, where do we stand with them, are they getting older, do we need new ones, how many do we have, things like that. Just suggestions.
Well, the one comment I'll make here is we do want to be careful with goals, that they are not too specific, and that goals are goals, objectives are objectives, and action items are action items. If you have specific items here where you think the reworking can be done to incorporate something, at least on a broad-scale basis, to encompass that. I mean, one thing I'll mention about programmatic evaluations, those are going to take place every year for every program. If there is a specific initiative in place as it relates to either dual-language or students with disabilities, that could certainly be incorporated here. There is a lot that has taken place over the summer that goes in all different directions that may, to a certain degree, be incorporated on a broader sense within goal number one, but that's the kind of thing I'd like you to look at and tell me what you think. Goal number one is just one example.
Goal number one was a place where I did think maybe you could add the words extracurricular. I think it fits right in there, and it's, I mean, it specifically says, correct, new curricular and instructional measures, but I think extracurricular activities, all of them, sorry, not just sports, enhance the individual student growth and their interest exploration especially, and I think that's, I think adding extracurricular into that goal would enhance it.
Wouldn't interest exploration maybe, isn't that kind of the same as extracurricular or maybe swap out?
No, because it specifically says new curricular and instructional measures. It doesn't include extracurricular in that, in that goal. I'm just saying, in that list of new curricular and instructional measures, you could just add extracurricular, and I think that would be, to me, that would be excellent.
I see that from growth perspective. I was thinking more as property, like what we own, what we need to own, what's missing, what's not missing with respect to some of our extracurricular activities. I'm interested in knowing about the equipment, the equipment that we have purchased over the years, the equipment we'll need to purchase over the years, so we can kind of plan financially as well and have an accountability of all the things that we own.
Across the boards or just athletic equipment are you talking?
We can do it across the board, but I think we can start with athletics.
I just kind of feel like, and I don't disagree with you, I just, there's a piece of me that feels like that shouldn't necessarily be a board goal, it should be the athletic department's goal, that they have some kind of list of what, you know, equipment we have and what's getting old and what needs to be replaced and how the money's being spent. Although I appreciate what you're saying, because the accountability is obviously important. I'm just not sure that it's a, necessarily a board goal more than it is an athletic department's goal.
Right, if it's not already in the job description, add it in, but that's separate of what our, you know, it's separate of a goal.
Again, it's just one, just my take on it.
No, I agree, because it's an important thing, but it's not, I don't think it's something that will go in as a goal, but more of making sure it's in the job description and it happens.
Right, or it's a discussion at the table with a motion and a resolution, and you ask for something specific, or you're asking for specific information from the table with accountability for whatever, whatever department or property you're looking at, if you want to count the tubers, you know what I mean, whatever it is.
I actually, I agree with Xavier as far as that the information that we need, the information we need for our athletics department, from a equipment standpoint, how old it is and new, buying new equipment, and inventory management, if you, if you will, is important. But I also agree with Jen that I don't think it's a board goal, but it would be good to see something that is in practice that we have, that we use to actually do that, that process. So I don't know how, how we would approach that, but I would, I would agree that it is something that there's an accountability that needs to be put on our athletic department to provide that information.
And understand that this conversation is also a part of the budget process every year. So when new things are requested, this is something that we review annually. So it's not, it's not as if information doesn't exist at this point, and if the board wants to see that, we can certainly, we can certainly make that available.
And I understand that. I'm just saying that from the perspective of we get the budget season and, okay, we need to get this new stuff, and this is how much money we need for it in the next budget cycle, we see a number. We don't see that it's, oh, we're replacing football helmets because they're 20 years old. Not that we have 20-year-old football helmets, I don't want to get anybody panicking, because we don't.
I know we don't.
Right, just throwing that out there.
Obvious reasons, but.
It's example.
But my, my response to that is, I will provide you with any information that you want in that regard. That's, that's the easier part of this, but I can tell you that that's not necessarily something I would put into the budget documentation, but if it's requested, I could certainly include it. So that would be more along the lines of justifying the numbers that are presented to you, the 2855 codes. This way, you can see exactly, not only what is being purchased, but when it was last purchased. There is, much like we do, we have the same thing in place, and I can show you this as well, and actually, I'm going to show the athletic equipment, I'd like you to see this as well, what runs through the textbook replacement cycle, the curriculum writing cycle. I mean, there are a lot of cycles that are in place that we have mapped out from year to year on a long-term basis. I would want you to see all of that, just so you could.
Sure, and the music department.
Well, they're, they're a little bit different there in terms of equipment, but, I mean, you could see all of this.
Right, right.
And this would back up the numbers that are being provided for you.
Good.
Or for your view, anyway.
On a completely different, different goal, and actually, I do agree with Christine on the extracurricular side, too, that would be, I think, helpful to have as part of that, that description of goal one. Just jumping ahead a little bit.
Wait, Tom, before we jump off of that one?
Yeah.
Thought is that if we're really talking about the review of, let's just call it extracurricular department areas, okay, and basically overall status, again, looking at how it would impact the budgeting process, as you described it, it seems to me that that becomes in addition to number three, where we simply add a statement that includes more, you know, detailed reporting from, available to the board. So you may get it, but we may not necessarily see it with more detailed departmental data available to the board upon request, or something like that. Because really, I mean, I think we could fit it right into that, that budgeting and raise the level of overall awareness without, you know, making it its own thing.
Okay. So to add to that statement, the budget for extracurriculars is already set. And I think, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, referring to the types of reports that we get at the end of the year from club advisors that would then dictate, for example, at the high school, whether or not a club continues as is for the upcoming year, or whether membership wasn't where we thought it would be, and do we consider other opportunities, have interest change, et cetera. This is part of the administrative evaluation process at the end of each year. What we couldn't do, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this, this was alluded to here, we couldn't just add another five clubs at the high school on top of what's already there, because the budget would not permit that.
You mean this year? No, right during the school year, you mean.
Correct, but, but even so, if there is, to keep the budget in that respect manageable, you know, we've got to exercise our due diligence in evaluating what has occurred one year, and then determining whether Club X stays and Club Y is added, or if Club X is changed, or if there are modifications made each year. And honestly, the way it should work is that the extracurricular activities offered at every building reflect student interests and.
Right, I was just going to add that.
And I will type for the, Mr. Kusak is not here tonight, but I will tell you that this is something he is, he is constantly asking for additional club money, because he wants to make sure that if there is an untapped interest that it's out there, and the conversation we typically have, all right, is there something there that really is not well-attended or is not doing what it has done in the past because interests have changed? Let's take a look at it. And, you know, again, we could probably share additional information in that regard with you, so you can see exactly how that process works.
All right. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions about?
The only thing I was going to bring up is in talking about teacher morale, I know we put the word morale in here, but is that what, based on what James was just talking about, is that addressing that concern or that need? I'm not, I'm just trying to get what everybody thinks on that, because I'm not sure myself that it's what James was defining.
Yeah, as far as, you know, morale and the support from the district and administration, you know, and the board, which we haven't put in writing, but I hope they all know exists.
And I think they do, and that, that was put in there basically to complement the concept of, of support. His whole feeling is it had to be connected to something. Putting teachers in, in a solid professional situation where we can provide them with the opportunities that they are looking for will certainly address a big part of that.
Like in response to the concern that.
Number eight, Kathy, if you want to, I don't know if it's on the screen behind you. Number eight, okay.
Jim, are you saying like, sorry?
Yeah, same thing, like, saying it, does that satisfy what you were, I mean, not to say to pinpoint, you know, to, to choose specific words, but along the lines of what you were talking about.
Jim, is what you're saying is that it, you're, I, the idea in this goal, I, I took it as in response to a concern from the professionals that, you know, more demands have been placed, and different demands have been placed, and changing demands have been placed, that we will make sure that they have what they need.
What types of opportunities can we bring to them, or resources can we provide to them that would not only support their growth as educators, but would help build morale in the district during a time, and this is a conversation that he and I have had, during a time where it's been.
Hard to be a teacher.
It's, it's been hard to be an educator, it really has been.
I like the way it's written, I like the way you, I like the way you put it in.
And I can say firsthand that I want nothing more than for every staff member in this district to feel like they're supported and to feel like that they're growing as, as professionals. Because honestly, if that, if that's in place, our kids are going to be the beneficiaries of that, because they're going to do their jobs better. And that's really, I'm trying to, I guess tie, we're trying to tie it into something professional there, so that it, you know, we can link the growth and morale to them turnkeying that to kids.
Do we want to say anything? It's, the thing is, I, you know, you don't want to just put words out there and have them, oh, sorry.
Can't hear you, Jim.
You don't want to just put empty words out there that don't have a concrete, I mean, I don't want to just feed you guys a bunch of lovely words that mean nothing. That doesn't get you anywhere. But in some ways, I wonder, we, I think Huntington, one of the things we do best is, I think that the culture of our school district is such that, it's a really tight community. I grew up on Long Island, it was nothing like this, and I just wonder if maybe we couldn't, and again, I don't want it to be empty words, but just, it's a thought, to maybe add something in there about, you know, trying to instill and create or foster a, you know, continued culture of support for our teachers within the buildings, or something like that. And again, I'm just throwing it out there, because I do think Huntington is a special place in that way, and I think it's one of the reasons that we have wonderful staff members who stay put despite the fact that education is not an easy job right now. And, you know, it's just a thought, anyway, because I, I understand what James is getting at, and I do want our teachers to know that above all else, you have our support and our respect.
It's funny, because I, while, of course, it's an important thing for the board to think about, I actually think of it more in my role as a parent. Like, I think I spend more time on that particular issue as a parent, like forever, I, as any teacher who's had either of my children knows, I ask a lot, but I always try to give at least five compliments for every request that I make, and they're sincere, true, and I don't just tell the teacher, you know, so I think it's something that parents can really help with, because I, I think it's important, it really helps the relationship, you know. Just putting that out there, that's not really a board thing, but just saying.
Well, that's number six.
There's, there's so much overlap, even when you don't think there's overlap, there is overlap. And I can tell you that from, from a committee perspective, all the way up to myself, when we are hiring, the first thing that we, we really look to, to accomplish with a, with a hiring practice is to find people who can come in here and connect with the kids and build relationships, because that, that is something that often cannot be taught. So with that, often comes student motivation and kids' willingness to go out of their way. You want the teacher in the classroom, where the kid may not want to be there and not want to do the work that day, but will do it because they don't want to disappoint their teacher. And that also, I think, comes with professional growth and morale.
I think that we might be able to very easily help embody some of the kind of thoughts that everyone's expressing, just by adding one word to number eight, and that is changing it from engaging professional development to engaging personal and professional development, where it's not just about the teacher as a teacher, it's the teacher is the person who is, you know, there at, you know, seven o'clock every morning and staying as late as their students need, and things like that, really, for the support. And again, that all leads to, I believe, improved morale. It's not just the teacher, the professional, but the teacher, the person.
That's true, and maybe even somehow getting the word acknowledgement in there. I don't, you know what I mean?
Yes, I'm just suggesting engaging personal and professional development opportunities. And I'd also like to make sure that, that this pertains to all employees, not just.
Yes, not just teachers, everybody, oh, see, now you're hitting, you're giving a little preview of my, what I'm going to say at your superintendent conference today.
Okay.
Stepping on my speech. Did anybody have any other comments to make about our board goals, any other concerns?
I have something quick, and I'm not sure how to word it or that it really even works, but the same point, number eight, as a teacher, that looks to take advantage of professional development opportunities, one of our biggest things at work is always the support to be able to do that, and so that it's not always coming out of our prep time, which then means so much more time at home. I don't know that that's realistic or how to even word that, but knowing that administration supports the teachers in their professional development endeavors, and I think it's, it may already be worded properly that way, but that's the thought that comes to mind for me as an educator now.
I don't know how specific you want to make it, though.
Yeah, I want to be careful with that. I also want to make sure that if we included engaging, relevant engaging personal and professional development opportunities, I want to have a sense of what that, we're, we're constantly, and I know Beth is around the clock looking at and working with, with James and others, to put good, solid professional development opportunities in place. I just need a sense in my own mind of how that's different from personal development and what, what that looks like as part of this goal. Because part of our professional development program may be helping them develop as human beings outside of the teaching profession, as well as inside, so I just want to make sure that we're interpreting that in the same way.
Instead of augment, should we just put support, continue to provide and support relevant and engaging professional development?
Well, we have the.
Well, I mean, we'll provide and augment in those opportunities, et cetera.
Now, right signs of support, teacher growth, I got you.
And I have no issue with the personal development, I just want to make sure I know what that looks like in.
What it really means.
Well, because you don't want to.
Concrete fashion. And those points is well-taken. I mean, it's, we're teachers, we did an exercise today at the administrative workshops, looking at the roles that we play, and, you know, we're professionals, we're parents, we're siblings, we're children of others, you know, there's, there's a lot of different roles that we play, and our professional role is but one, and not always the most important. But it certainly is the most important to the kids that we're surrounding, that surround us every day. So we want to make sure that, that we put the teachers and, and other, members of other units in the best possible position to do what they need to do to support our kids. So, you know, like I said, I have no problem with adding that concept to personal, I just want to make sure that we all agree on, on what that looks like or what we're implying there.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know where that leaves us, I don't know.
Maybe you discuss it with Beth.
Yeah, we can, I mean, they can sit down with, with Cabinet, and I can, I can sit down with Mr. Graber as well, and we can have a conversation as, as to, you know, what he has in his mind, I think that would be reasonable, and we'll certainly be speaking, I'm sure, more than once this week, so we can follow up.
That sounds good. All right.
Do we all agree with adding extracurricular, like Christine, Christine mentioned to number one?
What was that?
Where do we, where do we leave off with extracurricular number one? Did we agree to add?
I, I don't see any harm if, if the board agrees in adding that to goal number one, because it doesn't talk about adding or subtracting, it, it talks about. it doesn't talk about adding or subtracting, it talks about, well, it does say new. And new was mentioned, I think, in response to something Bill mentioned last week, that we do have a number of new curricular and instructional measures, quite the collection of them, first time for 1819. There are some new pieces on the club agenda at each building, but they're, you know, there's certainly fewer and further between than the curricular instructional measures.
Do we really need the word new? Because if we just don't have new, then it's...
That's another opportunity.
Includes the new ones and the ones we have.
I'd rather get rid of new and add extracurricular.
And it just sounds like we're talking about things that we're already doing, and I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
So I think if we took out new...
No, because wait, for example, the reason new is in there is because if you look, and there was a nice article on the website a couple of days ago, on the things that are coming out of the curriculum and instruction office, there are curricular changes across the board, there are new resources that are being implemented, there are new electives that are being implemented at the high school, there's so much new being placed on the table for the first time in 1819, and I think that kind of goes along with another comment that was made during the last meeting, that let's focus on the here and now, and not just roll over goals that have become part of the fabric here, let's focus on the things that are being done differently in 1819. So that was what, that was supposed to encompass?
So we could say new and existing?
Either that, or could you say facilitate implementation of new curricular and instructional measures, and provide extracurricular programs and clubs that will promote continued individual student growth and interest exploration? Yeah, I mean, you could put it right after measures.
I think it may be cleaner if you want to expand it to new and existing, that might...
Or if we gave extracurricular an adjective, so that new stayed with curricular, so facilitate implementation of new curricular, comma, meaningful extracurricular, or something like that, and instructional measure.
Yeah, because even existing curricular and instructional measures are being...
Supported and implemented.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to say it like revitalized, but there are new things are happening in those areas, as well, you know, even though we're not introducing maybe a new curriculum, you know, so I think new and existing...
But they evolve, and they are not a by...
So I think if you just add and existing, and add extracurricular somewhere, then I think all of those problems are...
Yeah, I don't think anybody would argue the point that student growth and interest exploration, a lot of that may be on the extracurricular level.
Yeah, for some, yes, for sure.
But it's also curricular. And so much of our extracurricular is really getting woven in with some curriculum, you know, curriculum, and, you know, for example, robotics, and having new classes that, you know, sort of intertwine with that, and computers, and, you know, I'm just saying that I think they go together.
All right, should we leave it to Mr. Plansky to take back and rework one more time?
Well, I will engage my, any thoughts on your end down there?
I was like...
I didn't want to put you on the spot, but she's...
I mean, I know that last time we met afterwards to kind of help to reframe some...
I can't hear anything that's happening down there.
Right into the mic.
I think adding extracurricular does change goal one a bit, but if that's something that we want to add in, I think it's a good idea to put it as part of one of the goals. I think that when we added in the professional development and the morale, after what Mr. Graber said last time, we tried to incorporate that with some work that we were already looking to do this year, that was already kind of planned with all the different curricular expansion that we have with technology and with other programs, so I think they're good.
I think it may be worthwhile, we'll definitely have that conversation, speaking with James is easy, and it might also behoove us to share this with the administrative team as well, and have them take a look at it, and see if anything jumps off the page there. They've seen it as part of our board agenda, but, I mean, I can tell you, I can speak to two days of administrative workshops where things were, ideas are flowing from eight o'clock in the morning until three thirty in the afternoon without interruptions, so I'd like to solicit their feedback as well. And that can be done relatively quickly. It would require yet one more meeting to, I think we're on the right track in terms of the types of things we're going to focus upon with these goals, so we can get started with the action planning process regardless, but just to fine tune this and get some additional feedback, and I will share with you in advance of the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you very much for working on it, your continued work on it.
Thank you for your feedback.
And all that spare time that you have.
All right, kids, we got a lot of board policies to go through, most of them, I think we asked, you know, we covered, but obviously, if anybody has any questions, here we go. So the first one up is Board Policy 5640, and that is smoking and tobacco use. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 5640, smoking tobacco use. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, in a second. I've got Christine. Do I have any comments, questions, or anything about this policy? All right, all in favor? Fantastic. Board Policy 5660, meal charging and prohibition of meal shaming. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of policy 5660, meal charging, charges, and prohibition of meal shaming. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Linda, and a second is Barry. Does anybody have any comments, questions about this particular policy? All right, then, all in favor? Just so you know, there's a typo, it doesn't really matter. There's charges, meal charges, I'll show you later. Okay, moving on. Board Policy 5665 is wellness. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 5665, wellness. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Barry, and a second is Tom. Questions, concerns?
One comment I'll add there is, one of the things that the policy calls for is the establishment of a wellness committee. That committee would be formulated, Kathy would oversee, we'd have a group of people who would then possibly reevaluate the policy, and look at the draft regulation. I have the regulation attached now, not for placement into the regulation manual, but just as a sample, that we would employ the committee to look at as, or as among their first tasks.
I have a recommendation for a former Board of Ed member that might be interested in being part of that policy committee.
I would certainly be interested.
Good, all right, see, we got some interest. All right, we have a motion and a second, and all in favor. That is everyone, all right. Moving on to Board Policies 6212, certification and qualifications. Whoops. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 6212, certification and qualifications. I am looking for a motion.
Motion.
Okay, I've got Barry in a second. Christine, any comments or questions on this particular policy? Anything from you? Nope?
Make you happy.
Thank you. That's good, that does make me happy. All right, all in favor? Excellent, because, you know, I can't take a typo. All right, we're up to Board Policy 6220, which is temporary personnel. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 6220, temporary personnel. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Tom, in a second. Linda? Okay, any comments or questions? You have any comments?
Most of these, I'm going to stay quiet, because we discussed them at length on the sixth.
Love it. All right, so we've got a motion and a second, all in favor. I didn't mean that in an insulting way either. All right.
No offense taken.
Thank you. Board Policy 6550, leaves of absence. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 6550, leave, leaves of absence. Can I get a motion, please? Christine, and a second from Bill. Comments or questions? All in favor? Fantastic. Okay, we're up to Administrative Regulation 7130R, determination of student residency.
There is no motion there, because it is a regulation that it carried over from the last meeting, primarily because I didn't want to put it in the manual, or approve it administratively, until Board Policy 7135 had been adopted by the board. They kind of go hand in hand.
All right, so did anybody have any comments or questions about that? No. Okay, we're going to move on to Board Policy 7135, education of students in temporary housing. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of new policy 7135, education of students in temporary housing. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion.
Motion from Tom, and a second from Xavier. Any questions for Mr. Plansky about this policy? All in favor? Terrific, getting there. Board Policy 7222, diploma or credential options for students with disabilities. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 7222, diploma or credential options for students with disabilities. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion.
Motion from Barry, and a second. Second from Christine. Anyone? All right, all in favor? That is all of us. To Board Policies 7223, participation in graduation ceremonies and related activities. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of new policy 7223, participation in graduation ceremonies and related events. I need a motion, please.
Motion.
Motion, Tom, and a second from Linda. Anybody have any questions or comments? All in favor? All of us. Board Policy 7242, military recruiters and institutions of higher education. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of new policy 7242, military recruiters and institutions of higher education. I need a motion.
Motion.
Tom, second, and Barry, questions?
Quickly, Jim, the opt-out opportunity is provided in Spanish as well.
That is correct.
Thanks.
There is a form that Erie One Bosse has put out there as a sample, what we do is very similar to that at the high school level, and it is put out in both languages, so it is an active, you've got to actively opt out, but it's a very easy form to fill out and return.
Any other questions? Okay, then, all in favor? That is everyone. Board Policy 7320, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances, students, relating to students. It is upon recommendation from the student, from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval, I was doing so good, of revised policy 7320, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances as relates to students. May I have a motion, please? Linda, and a second from, uh, Tom, actually, sorry. That's all right, I'll give it to him. As long as somebody seconded, right? Does anybody have comments?
One quick comment here, there was a request at the last meeting to add vaping devices into that first section, and that was done.
Yep, saw it, thank you. Yeah, I think that is...
You're welcome.
All right, then, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. Board Policy 7512, student physicals. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 7512, student physicals. Is, can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Barry, and a second. Christine, any comments?
I'd like to just throw out a commendation here, because there is an administrator in the audience who's in charge of the entire special education program in the district. What you may not know is she's also, she also oversees the nurses and all of the health-related matters district-wide, and she does a terrific job, so thank you, Diana.
Thank you.
Top of all of this.
We really appreciate that. This one does say, I was pretty sure I saw it before, but it does also incorporate any grade level if a student is participating in a sport, the physicals.
Yes, and anything you see here that's been changed is aligned with new regulations, whether they be Part 100 or Part 135 specifically. Let me just go to the section myself here.
Right, because it had basically specified, and that's all crossed out.
Sorry, I need a laptop, not my iPad. Yes, so the whole process, and what grade levels are involved, have changed, and this is all thrust upon us, it's not a choice that we have, but, you know, obviously, student physicals are going to be mandated, required, before any sporting participation is going to take place.
Okay, thank you. All right, I believe we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you, that was all of us. One more. Okay, this is Board Policy 7513, medication and personal care items. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 7513, medication and personal care items. Whoops, I need a motion, please.
Motion.
Barry, and a second from Bill. All right, did anybody have anything they wanted to ask about this one? This is the one that added in the Sunday motion?
Feminine hygiene products and sunscreen.
Right, okay, that's what I thought. All right, we have a motion and a second. Did you guys, anything?
Sorry.
No, no, it's okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't passing you by when you had an actual question. I was moving kind of fast.
I'd let you know, trust me.
Okay, then, all in favor? Thank you, no, that was not meant to be scolding at all, I promise. Children with disabilities, Board Policy 7611. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 7611, children with disabilities. I am looking for a motion.
Motion.
Tom, and a second from Xavier. Okay, anybody have any comments or questions?
Some much more thorough policy than what was there.
Thorough is good. All right, then, I guess we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Great, that's all of us. Board Policy 7640, student individualized education program development and provision. Excuse me. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of amended policy 7640, student individualized education program development and provision. I'm looking for a motion. Christine, and a second. Xavier, anybody have comments or questions? All in favor? And I'm happy to announce, we're at our last policy. Board Policy 8240, instruction in certain subjects. I love how vague that title is.
It was actually recommended title change, so I don't want you to, I think I came up with that one on my own, I did not.
Okay, it was the ad exec that came up with that. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue final second read approval of revised policy 8240, instruction in certain subjects. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion.
Barry, and a second. Linda, anybody have comments or questions? All in favor? And that is all of us and all of them. Thank you again to the policy committee, you guys rock. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to curriculum and instruction, and that brings us to Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSC CPSC submissions as delineated.
All right, I know we all got those, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Linda, and a second from Barry. Any questions? All in favor? Excellent, thank you very much. Mr. Plansky?
Okay, I am asking the board for approval tonight of personnel items on schedules three, four, five, six, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty, and twenty-two.
Like he said, do we have a motion? Christine, and a second.
Second.
Barry, any questions? All in favor?
It's busy this time of year.
Yeah, it sure does, personnel is loaded.
Couple of announcements, but I do want to acknowledge the efforts of Mr. Hender. We have very few pieces that have yet to be filled, the ones to be expected are, we have some daily recurring substitutes who, between the time of appointment, have now secured either leave replacements or probationary positions, either here or elsewhere, but where we are right now on August 27th is a very good place in terms of, and we've got some real high-quality people joining us for 1819, so thank you. us for 1819, so thank you, Chris, for everything you've done.
Round of applause.
And on that, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the two individuals at the end of this table who participate very directly in the hiring processes, Beth primarily instructional, Kathy primarily non-instructional, Bill, not at all, but...
But we love you anyway, Bill.
We love you anyway, but thank you to both of them, who are literally my right and left hands, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on that end, we do have, for those that don't know, Matt Prolongo, math teacher at the middle school, has accepted the dean's position at the, for lack of a better term, the intermediate level, and we have a young lady coming in by the name of Dana Rubswich. I can't, is that you, Dana? I can't see that far, so, welcome, Dana.
Welcome aboard.
She is going to be terrific, and I, just because he's a little bit larger, also joining us in the math department, on a part-time basis, to start, Mr. Nick Wagner.
Welcome aboard, you too. Welcome.
And, let's see, and I will, you know what, I'm here, I might as well mention it, we have a couple of leave replacements who we're excited to bring on as well. Actually, one in district, Emily Franco, is going to be joining us in the kindergarten classroom at Washington, so, is Emily here tonight? I just can't see that far, so welcome aboard, Emily.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, we'll clap for Emily, too, then. Wasn't sure if you were finished with that thought. All right, and that brings us to Dr. Acker.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through Q on this evening's business agenda.
All right, that's quite a bit there. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Barry, and a second from Christine. Did anybody have any, anything? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you very much, everybody. Oh, and Barry.
Yep. We have just approved a donation of a Pace Journey 6x12 single axle trailer from the Huntington Robotics Incorporated for the Huntington Robotics Team, and this donation has a value of $4,330.40, so we are very thankful for that, as well as I'm sure the robotics team is.
Ms. McGinnis and Mrs. Low are very happy to leave that to us at this point.
Yeah, right, just to get it out of their driveway. Thank you very much, the robotics team, and, all right, that brings us to our second public commentary. The mic is open for all, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine of you. Nobody? All right, then, that brings us to closing remarks by the board members. Anybody have anything?
Good luck to everyone next week.
Yes, good luck to everybody next week, for sure.
And thank you for all you do.
Yes, and I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Tom, a second? Everybody, all in favor? All right, you can pick anybody you want from that side, Joanne. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate you hanging in there. Get home safely.
Hang in there.